Lord, thank you for allowing us to meet tonight and conduct the city's business. Allows us to always make the decisions to serve you, make what's best for the city and our citizens, keep our first responders safe, and let us all have a great evening. In your name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Call to order, the city council meeting of March 20th, 2025. And JP, since you're already standing up, you want to leave this in the pledge?
Absolutely.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Vicki, roll call when you're ready.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Here.
Lane Tubbs.
He said he'll be 10 minutes late.
Pete Harris.
Here.
Chris Foster.
Here.
Ally Sugg.
Amy Bader.
Here.
Andy Eklund.
Here.
Attorney Prince.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Members of the press.
On the record show, we have a forum. Okay, let's get started. First, I need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented from February 20th, 2025, city council meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Amy Bader. Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Al, excuse me. Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of the payment journals dated February 1st to February 28th, 2025.
Make a motion to accept them.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of street fund financial statement sanitation fund, general fund financial statement, community center, Rowan M. and miscellaneous funds dated February 28th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion, can I get a second? Any discussion?
Was that Eklund that made the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask about, can I ask about that gas bill?
Yeah.
Do I need to ask about that? I just wondered, Josh, on that, do we use gas for heating the aquatic center? Is that the pool?
So that's part of this, as you know, we create that rainforest effect, just like I would like to call it.
Right.
So what we've done is during the winter months, January, February.
Right.
We had the pool water was heated 95 and 93, but we had to open the roof.
Right.
In order to let the humidity escape. So there you had the, it was constantly heating the pool, just like you had your heater on your house, you had all the windows open.
Okay. I just wondered, because I'd seen the, like, the gas bill for that, and I knew we weren't heating the building.
Yep.
So I wondered if we were using gas to heat the pool or what we were doing.
Yes, it's gas to heat the pool.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
The way, just so you know, the way that we can offset that now, that we have control over it the way we do.
Right.
So in the summertime, usually you still heat the pools. When the summertime was 100 degrees, you don't need to heat the pools.
Right.
You can just burn them off. So that should offset, just like at your house, it'd be expensive in the wintertime.
Yeah. I just wondered, I'd send a message to Casey, wondering, because I was like, spent that much on gas and the heat wasn't working.
So that's what that's.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Thanks, Pete.
Yep.
Okay, Vicki, when you're ready.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, you have your supervisor reports. Do you guys have any questions for your supervisors? We've got everybody here tonight.
We've got one report that it said January at the top for the police department. Is it February data, but just had January at the top of it? Or is this the same?
Are you supposed to say?
Which one? The arrests and.
For mine, I've got February.
Yeah, February.
Uh huh. You want mine?
Yes, please.
Is it that one or is it this other one?
I have two.
Or?
Yeah, both.
How's the ball field's coming? The dirt?
Yeah, so.
Just our monthly dirt report.
We just completed, so we have, we did hold the former, the person who did Field 6, the high school baseball field, to their contract. They removed that, and literally almost immediately, I feel like you could tell the difference. I know JP's really been involved with that. We did use that on the company for Field 1, and they did that. Coach West says it's the best field's ever played on it.
It looks great.
So also Field 1's great. All the other fields should be good. We will continue to cycle those in. Just remind them that they are recreational fields, like not professional fields and things like that. So there is a standard we want to hold for recreation. I don't want to spend $30,000 on each field and dirt. You know, we need to just make sure we do it correctly over time. So haven't had any complaints about the fields.
Yeah, they look good.
Okay, so I do want to have some discussion on the tarps. And I spoke with Casey about it, but I wanted to speak with you also too, Rebecca. Are we able to, maybe not this year, but are we able to change the wording in the contract? Or is there, is the contract with the school like a living expectation that we have of them, they have of us?
I think it should be. It's a living document.
Okay. Is it able to be amended as we go, or do we have to wait annually on that?
How many years was this contract signed for?
I believe 30. We usually did it on a year-to-year basis, and then we changed that, so we didn't have to keep doing that. But it's 3 now, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, I can look at the wording and.
My answer to your question is that in general, or generally, you would need to wait until the end of the contract term to renegotiate the terms.
On the negotiation part, but if we needed to amend a certain rule?
Well.
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing.
Yeah.
I mean, we can't unilaterally change a rule.
And that was three years, starting this year or last year?
Last, I think it's this year too?
I believe, um, was this year, was it year 1? Oh, is it year 2? It's year 2.
I'll have to look.
We'll have to look.
Okay, I just wondered, yeah.
Go ahead. I know what point you're about to make.
Yeah, if we can't amend, or if we can't change a couple of things that are continued expectation that is not happening. And I had another question. What fields are covered, are supposed to be covered? If there's rain coming, what fields? I know the baseball field.
Yeah, well, so technically, the high school fields are Field 1 and Field 6, so the contract.
Softball.
Softball, yeah.
Okay.
So the contract is for those two fields.
Okay.
And that's, the contract is written in the manner of that we maintain those fields.
Pleasant man.
You know, we pay for the right grass, we'll spread it, things like that, we'll make sure it's mowed, chopped, everything like that. There's things in the contract that outline the coach's responsibility to do the mound area, the home plate area afterwards, but we're the ones who rake the fields, who drag the fields to be ready for games. What we do, asking that contract after the game, I mean, in some of this, I mean, I have talked with Darren Gallin quite a bit here recently, some of this isn't their control or something, it's not, but we did purchase tuning farms right before the season started. We asked to keep the tarps on the mound and home plate, so after their games, they drag them out and do that. They had a game the other night, they did that, I watched them, and then later we drove by and saw a kid had moved, I mean, it was a high school kid was hitting off the tee, and had moved those tarps off the field and like moved them out. So this kid was just out there completely by himself, just getting extra work in, which he should be allowed to do, but I'm sure he did not put those tarps back on the field afterwards. So it was all things like that. But also, to your point, the large tarp that covers the entire field is.
Infield.
Infield of the baseball field is a very large tarp, we need 15 to 20 people to do it. The way that contract is currently written is, it's the, if they want to play and they know it's raining that week, they need to tarp the field. That's on the coach. He knows that, I guess, he did not tarp the field, this was two weeks ago, right? Two weeks ago, and his thought was, well, we don't play for seven days, so I recall correctly, he was saying, well, we don't play, so it's supposed to rain on Tuesday, surely it will dry up by the next time we're supposed to play. Well, me and JP kind of talked about, listen, we just put $30,000 for dirt on it, and it's still so erosion, so even though when it does rain, it's still going to run some of that dirt off, but we just paid $30,000 on it. So that's.
That's part of my problem, is they have the idea that they don't need to cover unless they play. And the science behind it requires you to cover it if it's going to rain.
So they don't cover it, even for the next day they're going to practice?
So, yeah, exactly. So even like Sunday, like it's supposed to rain this upcoming Sunday, they've already told us they don't play again until the 31st, they're not worried about tarp field on Sunday because they're not, I guess, we're not going to.
Supervisor report.
So they're not going to cover it. They've already like let me know that they're not going to do that. And like I said, they're.
They let you know that they're going to do that.
Have you asked them to help? Have you asked them to help?
I have a problem with that.
Have you asked them to help protect the investment by?
Well, and I told them I understand your situation, but at the end of the day, we need them to do it. And the other coach before this coach, he actually busted the guys out like at lunchtime. I've seen him do that before, like bust the high school kids out to cover the tarp. And at the end of the day, they were like, it's, the way the contract actually states, if there's a conflict of interest or argument about tarping the field, then it resides with the park director. Like the park, if I say, don't even tarp on it, then they, they supposed to put the tarp on it. But we are having that kind of attitude.
Sure. Well, that's, those are, I mean, there's nothing that can be done right now during a contract term, but those are things that need to be noted and for when the contract has expired and we're negotiating a new contract with the school.
As for the, just on the other side of this also, just like with the softball field, so the high schools purchased the large tarps. They didn't purchase a tarp for the high school field. So just like Derek, if he rode from Field 6 on the high school baseball field, Derek can also ride from Field 1, we just put $23,000 or $24,000 into it, and it's obviously not to get tarped, you know, with that. So I mean, it's kind of like, we made these investments as the city for these fields, particularly for the, you know, especially for the high school, you know, in this condition.
And the current contract that says that if there's a disagreement, it lies upon you.
It relies with you, and then that's, that's where it's like, okay, well, we'd like you to tarp it. Like, how do, how do we get them to agree to come out there and tarp it?
Well, then they're.
The only time that I've actually had to ask.
Not right out, they're not.
Well, he asked them to tarp it, and they refused.
It, when he said, when he said it resides with the city, he means that the responsibility falls on parks and recs. Done, understand that correctly?
But we don't have the staff to do that.
I know, but that's what the contract says, is that if they're.
Students aren't employees. Should there be a disagreement regarding replacement or removal of tarps, the city shall have the final say.
Yes, but that is not.
That doesn't say who does it.
But that is not clear.
Right, it says the city says whether it does or not, but not who does it.
The city has this.
The city has the final say is pretty general.
Right.
Well, that's, that's the point, is that it says the city who has the final say over whether or not it gets tarped. It doesn't say that the city can order the school.
To tarp it.
To tarp it.
Yeah. And then the only time that that's came into play, where I'm asking to tarp it, he said that he didn't have enough kids to get there to put the tarp on. That was his response. So there I am, as my hands tied, like, whatever, if you can't get enough people there to pull it, then you can't get enough.
Well, keep a file on that, please, and so that those things can be addressed when the terms for the contract.
And we there, and like I said, we've talked several times in the last few weeks.
We have to prompt them to do it.
We'll let Josh finish.
Yeah, I've talked to him several times, far less just developing a relationship with the athletic director, so he understands what we're trying to do and everything like that, taking their investment. I mean, at the end of the day, it's our fields that we take care of for them, so, you know, I think he's starting to understand it. We'll at least communicate now, whereas previously, I think, we weren't, we were not communicating.
Sure.
How expensive were the tarps? I remember we saying they were pretty expensive, but.
The, were the tarps, the high school purchase?
The infield tarp, yeah.
The infield tarps, it was $6,000 for six tarps. So we ended up, and that, those cover pitching mound and home plate area on 5, 6, and 7.
But what about if we had to get a big tarp for the whole infield?
It could be anywhere from 6,000, I think you sent me a 1, 6 to 15,000. I mean, it depends. Again, and I've been a coach before, so I understand, you get high school kids to pull out the tarp. I think one time it iced over on the tarp, they're out there with shovels.
Right.
Breaking it up, putting holes in the tarp, they walk in on it with no cleats.
Right.
You know, and put holes in it and so forth. So I mean, it's one of those things, I think as soon as they get a tarp, they.
Ruin the tarp.
Yeah, they've got.
Yeah.
Is there a mechanical way, or something that exists?
I'm sure there is, but it costs way more than 15,000.
Has that been addressed, the mishandling of the tarps by the high school students?
Well, see, that, it's their tarp, they.
So they can do whatever.
So that's 100% them.
That's fair.
But it may be something that we need to keep in mind the next time a contract comes up, if there needs to be tarps on both fields.
Yeah, and it's, and just what he just said, it's kind of messed up, because they, if they punch holes in it, then we're back to putting dirt, water on the dirt.
Right.
When they cover it up, then, you know, the water washing away, it's a little different in that scenario, but still, it's like.
Yeah.
It's very frustrating.
Sure.
Because it, when they are, not intentionally, but they're definitely not thinking about it.
Right.
It's just prevented maintenance.
Right.
It's easy.
It's a bunch of high school kids, yeah.
I don't have kids to come out and do it.
Right.
You know, you should have thought about that yesterday, when you seen the forecast.
Right.
Everybody's watching the weather, especially people that work outside, people that want to play baseball, you know. And it's mandated that students have to have public service, public.
Community service hours.
Service hours, so.
There you go.
Get somebody, get kids from the school, I don't know. Or build your own baseball field, and y'all handle it. You know, I'm getting sick of letting people just get by with stuff, you know? I am, I just am.
I'm sad.
Okay.
Moving on. We are going to table all of the unfinished business. We still need to work on a few things. Okay, new business, we've got the water department audit that we need to approve. And Mr. Graham is here, if you have any questions. If you don't have any questions, I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the water department audit.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Vicki?
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Pete Harris.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Paul.
How you doing?
Okay, next up, we've got an invoice for Parks and Recs mowers.
So one of these was the one that has the bagger, right?
So the, the bagger has not came in yet, so Vicki can just, well, these are a new model of the X-Mark, and so all the accessories for that are running about two weeks lag behind. I feel like Nick is good for it, like I said, he's in town, this boat includes that.
On the invoice, it had all the accessories, yeah.
So one, one would be the bagger. This is something before, you were on council that we approved of us the last year.
Correct.
We actually, the mowers have already came in, and he lets pick them up, so I'm hoping they're gone.
They're sweet.
And I said, hopefully the bagger will be in in the next week or so, so.
And the bagger was needed, was that for one specific field, or is that for all the fields we're using?
We're using all the fields. So we have very nice fields. I mean, I, whether it be Field 1, I know that's the focus, because that's the high school.
Right.
But even Field 5, Field 7, you know, Field 3, Field 4.
But there was one specifically, JP, I think you had mentioned that you had to have a bagger or it'd kill the grass, right?
Well, they, they need, they don't have to bag every time, but all, all the fields that have grass that we're killing weeds or fertilizing.
Right.
Should be bagged, you know, once a class a month.
Yeah.
We were talking specifically about the infield, so.
Right, okay.
Probably on that lower high.
So you're going to take one of those and designate it for just fields, and then everything else will move out?
So that's kind of what we got right now. We, you always have one mower that's fields only, that includes soccer fields as well. So the one with the bagger will be strictly for the fields inside the playing surface, and then we'll just pluff everything back. And like I said, as well as the kiosks is doing right now, I'm looking at hopefully at least August, coming to you on site, let's buy another mower, so we can start cycling those out. We purchased that during the fun with the kiosk on the other side. But yes, that's what we do.
That was two new ones, and how many older ones are we still using?
Well, so ones of John Deere that we bought last year.
Right.
Outside that John Deere, it's the same series, Ford? Yeah, it's Ford, Ford X-Marks, that is, one of them's 2012.
Right.
And as many hours as we build, I mean, that's.
[laughing]
So we purchased one every other year.
Right.
We just, we did purchase, I think the last one we purchased outside that John Deere was 2020.
Right.
So we need to catch up on that.
Sure.
It's all within the maintenance, but what I want to clarify, what y'all want to clarify, others want to clarify.
Yeah.
And we already have them, right?
We already have them, so.
So we better approve it.
And everything came in under what it was quoted, right?
Everything, yes. It's just, we don't have the factor yet, but like I said, this is the only thing that's just.
So they were in the budget, but we still have to approve it?
Yes.
Because they were in the budget, it's, we're good?
Anything over 10,000 has to be approved.
Still has to be approved.
That's my limit, yeah.
Got you.
I'm making a motion, we approve it.
Second up.
Thank you, thank you. Josh, just stay right there. Vicki, when you're ready?
Okay, Pete Harris.
Yes.
JP Hodges.
Yes.
Amy Bader.
Yes, I don't know.
Louis Short.
Yes.
Andy Eklund.
Yes.
Lane Tubbs.
Yes.
Chris Foster.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next we've got the invoice for the Gator for Parks and Rec.
Just for the trails?
This is, supposed to be for the trails, this is the same brand, I got the, Brian and Ronnie, this is the brand that our park have, had, they said they have, he just used with or anything like that, so I was like, well, we'll go ahead and just use the same brand with that, so we got the quote of that. It does have heat and a windshield, so when they are going up and down the trails in the wintertime, they can still go down, trees fall in the wintertime, just like they did yesterday or this morning. So that, those are the accessories that we've added on to that.
And the invoices for $19,852.73 from Independence Country Offroad.
And we had this budgeted, we budgeted $20,000 last year for this. Once again, this is one of those things that previous councils agreed for us, so $10,000 from the council agreement.
Didn't we have the blower attachment for the front of it as well?
So that, that's something separate, we'll still work on that, yeah. Well, essentially, what we are going to do is we're going to weld a blower.
Onto that hitch.
So that we drive down the trails one way, it blows soft leaves one side, we turn around, it blows off the leaves on the other side. So there will be another part of this.
I thought, I thought we had that to do in that 20, though.
No, no, it was additional. I think we, I think it was a $6,000, we pledged an additional $6,000 for a cut blower.
Okay.
An industrial, you know, commercial type blower. I work on with Nick trying to.
And this, so this is the one that, that's got the same Kawasaki motor and everything? Did all the rest of them do?
Yes, I believe so. You don't have Kawasaki?
Ours is a Can-Am.
A Can-Am, yeah, it's a Can-Am, but the, you know what the motor is?
This is Can-Am.
So it's a Can-Am motor, so we, all the motors are going to be the same motors?
Should be, yeah. I know sometimes I switch that up, at least on lawnmowers.
Josh, what, what I was thinking?
I, I, I was caught my head, I was taking that. You remember what, when you looked and see what the.
Six.
6 WSD.
That.
I, I remember from our conversation that you had the, like you said, that $18,000 range, and so my goal was to make ours as similar to yours as possible, and I figured, whenever I bought yours a few years ago, probably that extra thousand bucks is a price there.
I had the blower with it.
I just wanted something to, when, you know, the park's magnitude are going out, they have a windshield at least, and, you know, they have heat, so that, I think the additional
Six WSD.
I remember from our conversation that you have the, like you said, that $18,000 range. And so, my goal was to make ours as similar to yours as possible. And I figured, whenever I bought y'all a few years ago, probably that extra thousand bucks is the price there. I just wanted something to, when, you know, the parks maintenance crew that are going out, they have a windshield at least, and, you know, they have the heat. So, I think the additional heat costs $2,000 or $3,000 to add to that.
$1,600.
$1,600, something. And I got, like, Jeep type doors on the side. Just like I said, something to protect them.
Yeah, you got a door and a trailer hitch.
Yeah, and a trailer.
Yeah, it's all on here.
Labor's $1,400, like, that's nothing we can do in-house then, I guess.
It's, so they have this ready to go, like our, at Batesville, at the Independence County, that's where it's from. And so, I don't know if the labor is already, like, it's already built in that sense. You know, we pretty much are buying this off their show on the floor.
A lot of the accessories are put on in-house, by the way, it's ready to go.
Do what now?
A lot of the accessories are put on in-house, by the way, it's ready to go. Can you keep the warranty available all the time?
Unless we weld them slower than before. Is that gonna affect the warranty?
That's why it's on a trailer hitch, so they don't have to know that.
Okay, can I entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the invoice for the Gator.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion or questions? Vicki, when you're ready.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we've got the policy for the Police Department. Chief Hale is here, if you have any questions for him.
How many officers will be trained to use these new, these new weapons?
Nineteen. Every officer will be issued.
Okay.
The policies for less lethal impact weapons.
Which is what?
Beanbag or Sabo, I'm not decided yet. But you've got to, for the, for the policy to apply, you need to... We got, we still gotta have legal chapters. So, what they do is Thomas Ward went and applied last year, and he can teach everybody usage. So, you've gotta have a policy in place so that, basically, you're showing that all in a trunk area, and it has to be loaded in that kind of condition that way you're not getting the wrong weapon.
Right.
Things that happen with the taser, you know, that were mistakes, put back. So, trying to do everything we can to prevent that. So, these, these other guns, the older guns that they're carrying right now, we turned into the less lethal guns. And we'll be getting new shotgun for lethal weapons. So, just kind of passes down, and those will have to be marked in orange, or, you know...
So, what's the Sabo? What, you said Beanbag and what?
Uh, it's a, it's a hard rubber stabilized, twelve gauge round.
Gotcha.
But Dick will knock you down. It will kill you at a certain range, but if they are safer at more of the 25 to 30 feet range, they can take somebody down. Whereas the Beanbag, you know, that maximum range, I'd rather, I'd rather have the distance.
Right, absolutely.
Might just prevent us from ever killing somebody.
It's knocking down.
Tasers are not reliable enough for, not building such a base.
And they're expensive.
What's a taser?
Taser's very expensive.
Give you a couple of seconds to close the gap.
It doesn't last longer.
So, what do we need to do?
Uh, just accept the policy.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Thank you. Any more questions or discussion? Vicki?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next is our energy loan payment. This was included in the budget. It's just such a large amount that I need to get it approved.
Was this the same one that I emailed you about, that, what those payments were? Is that what that?
I think this is separate. Those, for the construction part of it, we pay those and they get reimbursed.
Okay.
And this one is like an actual payment for the loan.
Gotcha.
The other ones were for, like, the construction cost.
Gotcha.
So, I just need a motion to...
I make a motion, we pay the invoice for $111,450.67.
For the energy loan?
For the energy loan.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Vicki?
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I have an adjustment to make in the train maintenance contract agreement. When it was first presented, sales tax was not included, so I just need to make that adjustment. So, the new total with tax is $23,315.76.
Do we have, do we have to vote on it, since it's just, we approved the first one, right?
We did.
Approve it as amended, a motion to approve it as amended.
Do we have any recourse for whoever was supposed to be doing the maintenance before when all this stuff rotted out? Yeah.
On gas and power, right?
I, earlier today, or this week, whenever it was up to substance, then Rebecca and I, Casey, kind of sent some emails this morning
Yeah.
to, on Leatherhead and all that, to officially go by them.
Yeah, I mean, they've been under contract all this time and everything wasn't working and rotten out, and you just see some of the pictures that the train people took, I mean...
You're correct.
We've requested in writing, or it should go out the next day or two, a maintenance, all of the maintenance records related to this contract.
Right.
We'll see if they match up. I've asked for...
Have they had it the whole time, since we've had a community center? And some of it hasn't worked from the beginning?
Correct.
So, we're gathering maintenance logs to see, and then we'll make a demand for, for payment.
Reimbursement or whatever, yeah.
Right. I've asked for Train to provide something in writing stating that the, the current issues are due to lack of maintenance from the previous provider.
Sure, from our goal plan.
Yeah, yeah, our goal plan, yeah.
She thinks...
We'll make a demand for payment, but those don't generally work out, and what I anticipate is there'll be a lawsuit.
Right.
Or breach of contract.
Sure. Thank you.
Make a motion that we amend the train contract to, in addition, to add the sales tax in with it.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Vicki?
Okay, Amy Bader?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried, and that leads us right into these invoices for Train, for the upgrades that we need to correct the things that have not been taken care of. Josh is just gonna steal the show tonight.
Busy?
Yes.
Just a summary, the first invoice is for $3,335, and that's related to two condenser fan motors in the chiller. The second is for $9,023.33. That's for two condenser fan speed inverters in the chiller. And the third is for $37,483.33, and that is for one condenser coil in the chiller, for a grand total of $49,841.66. Is that right?
Correct. So, I mean, my understanding of this is we'll then save $6,000 a year, but that's what the guarantee is, the train, something posted that with this. They came in, they've done their initial inspection, all this, and they found, like, one fan is continuously blowing at 100 percent, it won't stop. And so, they're just like, you're not gonna be able to save that money until this is fixed. This is something that should've been fixed years ago, I feel. And so, that's my understanding of this. Something different that you might know?
Oh, well, it's related to what you're talking about, the fans. And the fan speed is, like you said, continuously running because they bypass the VFD. So, the VFD is what throttles that fan speed up. And so, you've got an inrush apparent, and it runs, it's either off totally or 100 percent. And it's been that way for, I don't know how long. But anyway, power is, you bypass that, so this is remedy that, and should pay back the equipment, and have it maybe run at, you know, 10 percent, 25 percent relative to...
Right.
No wonder they can guarantee it.
So, these items were not in the budget?
So, will that come out of general?
Um, I think it could... It could come out of O and M for Parks and Rec, and we'll just have to amend the budget later.
Parks and Rec can afford it.
Yeah, we're building a splash pad.
What about one of the bond balances?
No.
Can't come out of any of those?
I mean, we're tapped out on bond until we hit to the drainage and all.
Do you wanna take it out of one of the CDs, or you wanna take it out of... But where's the best place to take it out of?
I would just take it out of O and M. This also helps with the energy efficiency.
Yeah. What do you think the chances are we're gonna be all right on that other side?
That we'll be all right on what?
I mean, what do you think our chances are on going back on our service contract?
Well, I think the chances of them responding to a demand payment are zero to none. I think that we have a fair chance of breach of contract and litigation. I hope I'm wrong, but...
Yeah, yeah.
It's gotta be done either way.
Right. Yeah, we're gonna have to do it.
It's gotta be done either way.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to find the money.
Can we just make a motion to pass the call period, second time? That total amount?
Sure. Just saying, we need some upgrades.
Make a motion, we pay the invoices for the community engine upgrades for the total amount of $49,841.66.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is this gonna be the end of that, Nick? Is that the last of it?
What's that?
Is that the end of that, the last of that?
What you just voted on?
Yes.
Well, that was, so, based off, probably, the December meeting, Train came in and did an analysis of the building, that's, that was your finding.
Right.
So, as far as I know, and that should be all, you should do it.
I've already gone through the train of everything that, while we have to do the controls, from lighting to heat and air of the facility, which we've never had before.
Right.
We're waiting to set that up, hopefully, but they said by the end of this week. It's now Thursday, so it'll probably be next week. Besides that, that's it, that should be it for this building. Once the Dextron unit, everything's installed over there, we might, you know, some things might pop up over there, but... That should be it for this building.
Thanks.
For a while. Just other ongoing maintenance and stuff breaks up down over time.
Since I came in late, can I go back to some of the stuff y'all talked about earlier? Or maybe did or didn't, I don't know?
Sure, go ahead.
I came in late, so I don't know if I missed some of this or not. Did we have any discussion about that Field One, where they came in, did the work that was not to our satisfaction?
Yes, we did. We had lengthy discussion.
Okay, I'll follow up with that later. What about the insurance claims on the roofing and the tarps and all this?
Nick and I are working on that.
Okay, right. I came in late, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, I'm lost now. Are we moving on to H?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Our CDs renewal, we can renew at six months at 4.75, or 12 months at 4.25.
Is this all of them, the general fund ones, the street fund ones, which ones?
The ones at Eagle Bank is all I have down.
They all say Eagle Bank. The four street fund and the four general fund ones all say Eagle Bank.
Amy says they're straight.
I know it's the straight ones.
Which, did we have some of them, we just stood on three months?
Yeah, I thought we did.
But that was First Arkansas Bank and Trust. Yeah, those were...
There was two for First Arkansas, because two we cashed in for the fire.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we went ahead and went six months on the last one, so it's great.
Yeah, does that break the better?
So, we... No, I'm nervous about it.
What was, what was the difference again, on the rate?
At six months, 4.75, and 12 months at 4.25.
Six months, check it again.
I don't have a three month.
Roll them over for six.
Four, seven, five. What about, what about, I mean, rates are eventually gonna go down. We're talking about, you said the street, the four one? Do two for six and two for 12.
We can do that.
That way, if you need it, six months, you have access to it. Otherwise, you got six months later. Not a huge difference in...
I like it.
Do I need to make a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion that on the CDs and the street fund, two of them are renewed for six months and two renewed for 12 months.
Second.
Great. Vicki, when you're ready.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, next, everyone should have received the legislative audit. Pack it in the mail, we just have to approve this. There were no findings?
No, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Thank you.
Who was my second?
Andy. Vicki, when you're ready.
Amy Bader?
Yes.
Andy Eklund?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Pete Harris?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges? Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we've got open mic, anybody like to address the council? Ms. Paula?
Good evening, Major Council, I have two questions. One, when does the park pool for dehumidifier come in?
It should ship on the 21st.
Of this, of this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Tomorrow?
And then, how long before it'll be fixed?
Well, it's gotta go through customs first, so, I know, let's just pray that it's a quick...
It's coming from Canada, right?
Yeah, it's coming from Canada. Gotta go through customs.
What's going to be done to address the mold issue in the pool, since myself and most of my swimmers who are older with breathing issues are gonna have problems with all that mold?
Yeah, it's being treated and pressure washed.
Will that fix it?
It should.
So, so about three weeks ago, we did use a billet remover and removed most of it that made it reach.
Yeah, we gotta get them higher.
Yes, they couldn't get them high enough, about four feet on both sides of the ceiling. So, that's where Jim Goodish or maybe Casey or someone has time to do the job cleaning for the rest of that building.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Paula. Okay, I don't really have many announcements. Spring break is coming up, I'm sure everybody's excited.
Thrilled.
Thrilled, great, yeah, I'm excited, I have no plans to work. The Margie Savin House is having a gala, White Makers Market started back up. And Easter's coming.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Ms. Paula. Okay, I don't really have many announcements. Spring break is coming up, I'm sure everybody's excited.
Thrilled.
Thrilled, great, yeah, I'm excited, I have no plans to work.[1710.91]